Took the plot down.
Okay. Welcome to the special city council meeting, December 7th. It's the day we all need to pay our respects to those who gave the ultimate sacrifice their lives. So please keep them in your memories. This is a special meeting like to acknowledge both the press and the public have been duly notified in accordance with the Freedom of Information Act. It becomes a fun night, a unique night. The first thing we're going to do is a presentation. Oh, but I think we should call road call.
You've forgotten already?
Ready?
Ready?
Councilmember Pounds?
Here.
Councilmember Moy?
Here.
Councilmember Streetman?
Here.
Councilmember Bell?
Here.
Councilmember Smith? Via Zoom?
Yes, I'm here and...
There she is, I see her. Councilmember Popson?
Here.
Councilmember Ward?
Here.
Councilmember Buchanan? Mayor Carroll?
Here.
You have a quorum?
Thank you very much. I think councilmember Smith wanted to say a couple of things before we got started, why she's not here?
Yes, thank you. Because I regret that I can't...
She's not muted for just us.
Don't you love technology?
Yep.
Okay.
But it works.
Can you hear me now?
We just can't hear you in here.
Okay. I'm not, should I go ahead and talk?
You want to call your cellphone?
Sure.
That, that works?
Talk, Susan.
She's going to kill the over a hundred.
It's safer there.
All right, Susan, you are, everybody can hear you.
Okay, thank you, sorry about that, sorry about that, sorry about that.
You may... Yeah, you need to mute.
Thanks, sorry about all that. I just wanted to say, because I regret that I can't be there in person for the last meeting of my term and the other colleagues that started with me in 2018. And for the sake of public awareness, I wanted to note that I am attending remotely because I am in quarantine for COVID. I am a breakthrough case. I am grateful to be vaccinated. My symptoms are like a very bad cold and I'm almost at the end of the quarantine. I just want to... ...of its symptoms to get tested whether or not they are vaccinated to help prevent spread. And please do consider what you can do to protect yourself and others. And if you are already vaccinated, please get your booster shot as soon as you can. Thank you.
All right. Thank you very much, Susan, good hearing from you and get well. Desiree, you ready to start the show?
Sure, do you want to go through the accomplishments report before we do the unveiling?
Let's do the accomplishment report first.
Okay, good evening, everyone. I am pleased to present to you all the 2021 accomplishments report for the city. You all have in front of you an 18-page report that highlights a lot of the work that we did this year. There's also extra copies over there and it's also available on the city's website. Amy, will we have the PowerPoint for the accomplishments report? I'll just go through a few of the highlights because we have done a lot. This year, the city successfully completed the rehabilitation of the public safety building. That project was completed under budget and ahead of schedule. And we successfully maintained normal operations during the construction. The city this year also began the construction of the Marina Dock Rehabilitation Project to replace the 30-year-old timber dock frame at the Marina along Morgan Creek. This project is scheduled to be complete in early 2022. Last year, the city executed a lease with marker 116 for their restaurant lease. And this year, they have started the building and the renovation of, of the building and are planning to start operations early 2022. The city made a lot of significant progress this year as it relates to drainage infrastructure. We completed five projects on Sparrow Drive, Forest Trail, Cross Lane, 32nd Avenue, and 41st Avenue, as well as 34th Avenue and Hartnett Boulevard. This year, we also completed the design, the engineering, the permitting, and the bidding of two of the three major drainage outfall projects that are going to start construction early 2022. When it comes to community enhancements, the city created a beach wheelchair rental program with three custom sand rider beach wheelchairs to enhance ADA access for residents and visitors. This program will be kicked off early 2022. We're very excited about that enhancement on ADA access. The Alapalms Police Department conducted free community training in the areas of Stop the Bleed, civilian response to active shooters, and online safety for preteens. This year, we also had the pilot program for surfing lessons as a sanctioned activity on the beach. During the pilot program in the summer, three businesses participated and offered these surfing lessons to both residents and visitors. And it's something that council has already approved to continue into 2022 throughout the whole year. The police department has established a marine unit to assist calls for service in the waterways around the island. And this has been done in collaboration and in partnership with the Charleston County Sheriff's Office. We're very excited that the recreation department has implemented online registration process for all recreation programs, athletics, which will save our residents' time and increase efficiency in operations. This year, we made significant enhancements to our front beach commercial district area, including new signage, new seating areas, enhanced landscaping, new lighting, and a new irrigation system, which will assist our efforts at beautifying and enhancing our commercial district. This year also, the city developed a conceptual design for the implementation of a public dock and green space at the IOP Marina, enhancing public access to the water. Just a month ago, we kicked off Phase Four Drainage Master Plan, which will evaluate the island's drainage system, assess our current and future flood risk, and identify and evaluate solutions and develop recommendations for the development of a comprehensive capital improvement plan that we did not have. Our wonderful recreation department successfully planned and executed a dozen of, more than a dozen of special events throughout the community. I'll just highlight a few of those. The IOP Farmers Market, which I think everybody has really thoroughly enjoyed. The environmental workshops, free meditation classes. I think that some of y'all will sign up after your terms are done or maybe while you're on council. We've had drive-in movies at the municipal parking lot, golf car parades. They have really adapted to the challenges of COVID-19 and having to maybe rethink some of our special events because of the pandemic. I know this is something that this council is very proud of. The establishment of the Environmental Advisory Committee, which is a nine-member board made of volunteer residents who will advise the city on matters of environmental impact, protections, conservations, and sustainability. That group has already met a couple of times and are very eager to explore innovations and best practices around the environment. The city also implemented the Coast Disclaim Campaign in collaboration with the Charleston Area Visitors Bureau, the Town of Sullivan's Island, and the City of Folly Beach to educate our visitors about the regulations to promote a litter-free beach. Valuing our employees, a lot of the projects that we did this year focused on advocating for our employees and making sure that we have competitive wages. And this year, we completed a compensation study to ensure that our city stays competitive in the regional labor market. And these recommendations were approved unanimously by council last month and they will take effect January 1st, 2022. The city held the annual employee appreciation event this year at the Alapalms Exchange Club. And during that event, council awarded the Leola Hambury Award to all city employees in recognition of all of their hard work, professionalism, and commitment to providing excellent community service during the last two challenging and unprecedented years. We have also enhanced the employee wellness program by implementing monthly wellness challenges to improve the health and well-being of our employees. The police department hosted annual award ceremony recognizing Officer of the Year, Supervisor of the Year, and the Communication Specialist, Jane Stewart, as the Professional Staff of the Year. The third annual award ceremony will take place next week. In the area of governance and operations, the city successfully maintained continuity of operations during the second year of the COVID-19 pandemic. Our departments continue to follow CDC recommendations to mitigate the spread and the impact of the pandemic. The city recovered from the impacts of the pandemic and ended FY21 in a strong financial position with a combined governmental fund balance in excess of $27.2 million. Our tourism fund revenues increased 44% from 2020 and 17% from 2019. We also successfully closed on two geo bond issues to fund the construction of the Phase Three Drainage Project and the Marina Dock Rehabilitation Project. Our police department successfully received over $130,000 in grant funding from the COVID-19 Funding Grant to offset some overtime expenses and support the purchase of the digital message board and an ATV. City Hall organized and provided comprehensive meeting packages to support over 136 official sessions of city council committees, boards, and commissions supporting openness and transparency and informed decision-making. This year, we also went through a strategic planning development process that included extensive feedback from our community and which helped validate this council's priorities and goals. The city successfully improved our community rating service, CRS, class from a six to a five, which will save the residents of Alapalms an additional 5% on flood insurance premiums every year. Protecting our city, some highlights from both the police and fire department. The police department has developed a traffic unit to specifically address traffic violations on IOP and ensuring that those officers who are assigned to that unit receive specialized training. Our police department was honored this year as the DUI Enforcement Agency of the Year for work put into protecting our community from impaired drivers. The fire department participated in over 15 fire and life safety public education projects and in most of our city events. We have, the report includes some stats from both the police department and the fire department that show how busy they all are throughout the year. And our final section of our accomplishment report highlights our community partnerships because we know that it takes a village, right, mayor? So we, this, this city successfully advocated for and supported the implementation of a free seasonal beach shuttle from Mount Pleasant to Alapalms in partnership with the Town of Mount Pleasant and the Cog and Carda. We partner with Low Well Dunes, the owners of the Well Dunes Resort, for the implementation of five new crosswalks along Palm Boulevard and enhancing pedestrian safety. Their, the resort invested over $45,000 for the construction of these crosswalks and have also donated their beautiful new event space for our police and fire department appreciation luncheon in the spring. The, our, the members of our fire department have fundraised and participated in the Low Velo Bike Ride, which is a city-sponsored event hosted by MUSC to raise money for cancer research. The city has began, began this year hosting quarterly meetings with our business community to facilitate effective communication between our business community and city government. So those are just a few of the highlights. I want to congratulate all of our team IOP for all the good work that happened this year. And before we do the unveiling, I'll say a few words for the mayor. Mayor Carroll has spent his entire life in the Low Country and is truly an advocate for the Alapalms residents. He was raised on Alapalms, attended Sullivan's Island Elementary, Multry High School, and then graduated from the College of Charleston with a political science degree in 1978. After college, he chose to remain on his beloved island and began his 40-year career in real estate. As a lifelong resident of the Alapalms, his primary focus has been on protecting the residential character of our community and giving back to the island. Prior to being elected to city council in 2011, Mayor Carroll served on the Beach Patrol and Control Board and later on the ATACs Committee. During Mayor Carroll's six-term on council and four-year term as mayor, he initiated and supported several issues that were primary resident concerns, like implementing and protecting the city's managed beach parking plan, protecting the coast by opposing offshore drilling and supporting plastic spam. Mayor Carroll also represented the city's interests as a board member of the South Carolina Beach Advocates, a nonprofit organization, and always remained steadfast in his commitment to the protection and conservation of our beach and waterways. During his term, Mayor Carroll served on the Personnel Committee, where he strongly advocated for competitive wages for all employees and was a passionate supporter of our public safety personnel. Mayor Carroll also led policy debates and changes to the code to reduce the density of development by doubling the minimum lot size for subdivisions, reducing the maximum lot area that may be covered with impervious surfaces, and requiring that all heart landscaping be constructed using pervious materials. Mayor Carroll, thank you for your service, for your community. It has been an absolute pleasure and joy to work with you and we hope you...
Politically correct, I gotta give her a hug.
We hope you enjoy your retirement and have safe travels.
I was sending y'all postcards every so often. Desiree has been the backbone of this city. She started as administrator at the same time as I as mayor. At the first three, our first year, we were going through this process, came to the top, Desiree. And she stays at the top and thank you, thank you very much.
You're welcome, thank you all.
So all the things that Desiree just commented on, you know, there's some big things that stand out to my history environmentally wise. We have led the state with some big things. I am most proud of the, being the first South Carolina coastal city to sign up with the South Carolina Environmental Law Project to sue the federal government opposing offshore drilling and seismic testing under the leadership of then Congressman Joe Cunningham. Joe, thank you for coming tonight, standing up, let everybody see you. Do you have a ear horn? Thank you for coming, Joe. We are also the first city to ban single-use plastic bags, styrofoam, and other plastic items on the beach. We take our coast seriously. Resilience-wise, as Desiree said, besides our ongoing drainage projects and thanks to our planning commission's patience, because they tried to get this passed before, we were able to double the size of the minimum lot size from 17,500 to 35,000 square feet. We want Alapalms to not be overbuilt. We also reduced the size of the house footprint from 40% to 35%. And as Desiree said, all driveways, sidewalks, and swimming pools around are supposed to be pervious. Douglas, thank you for all your help on that. You know, but it's not me, it's this council who did this. This was a group effort. As I leave this office, I have offered the city 2,500 to be used to plant oak trees at the city's, excuse me when I say this, ugly municipal parking lot. If the city wants to do this, I'm glad to donate the money to the Charleston Climate Coalition for this cause. David Quick has been an advocate for this. He planted trees at the Recreation Center before and is hoping to do the same thing to help beautify our lot. I hope our future government works on that. It's a win-win for everyone, an inviting look in the parking lot for our day guests and something that we as a community can be proud of while the trees help with stormwater runoff and improves air quality, not to mention providing shade. I am donating automatically, where's Robert, he's not here, $500 because he's got this beautiful little park being built behind the front beach bathhouse. So I promised him a couple of palm trees down there because that's his, his pet project. Serving the Alapalms has been a great honor. Our city family is unsurpassed. They are the ones who made us each, and everyone on this front table, look good. Police, fire, recreation, sanitation, administration. We could not have done it without all of y'all as one because again, I promise you, you're the ones that made us look good. And we also did it during an unprecedented worldwide pandemic that nobody gave us a handbook on. And having said that, it's time to unveil the picture. And I hope y'all take this with a grain of salt. Carol, Jimmy, and Capes, would you come up and help do this? No, man, I'll stand to the side. Put this together, but we did it. Is that for coming from the board up there? All right, let's be real.
It's not for real.
Now, for those, everybody here, Mike, James, and Joe, thanks for coming. Patty and Randy, thank y'all for coming. I love you all. The best of the... I never bore him on Alapalms. But anyway, if y'all want to leave, you can leave. But thank y'all for coming. Okay, now we gotta be serious. Carol, thank y'all for coming, y'all staying?
Thank you, y'all, fun.
Norma James is using the director of fun. Okay, moving on. Considerations, nominations, and standing committees for 2022. Mr. Philip Pounds, mayor-elect, would you want to take it from there?
I'll do it. Thank you, sir. So real quick, this was in your packet. For public safety, I would like to recommend or nominate Blair Hahn, Jan Anderson, and Rusty Streetman. For Public Works, I'd like to nominate Jimmy Ward, John Bogosian, and Blair Hahn. For the Real Property Committee, Rusty Streetman, Kevin Popson, and Katie Mirers. For Recreation, again, Katie, Jimmy Ward, and Kevin Popson. Personnel, Jan Anderson, John Bogosian, and Philip Pounds. Since we are one short, I'll step into the Personnel Committee for the first part of the year.
Okay, do I hear any other nominations? Hearing none, we're going to move on. The vote will take place on January 4th when they are sworn in. Consideration, nominations of boards and commissions, Mr. Mayor-elect.
So for Planning Commission, Scott Pierce, Marty Brown, Ron Denton, and Susan Naguski. For Board of Zoning Appeals, Arnold Carrick and Glenn Thornburg.
Are there any other nominations? Hearing none, we're moving on.
So for City Judge, Michael Maloney. For Associate Judge, David Michael. City Attorney, Brent Halverson. And Assistant City Attorney, Mac McQuinlan.
Do I hear any other nominations? Hearing none, moving on.
So fast as we've gone all year. Nomination for the Carda Board of Directors, I nominate Jimmy Ward.
Any other nominations? Hearing none, moving on.
Nomination for the Charleston Visitors Bureau, I would nominate Rusty Streetman.
Any other nominations? Hearing none, moving on.
Nominate for the Charleston Berkeley Dorchester Council of Governments, Jan Anderson.
Any other nominations? Hearing none, moving on.
And the Liaison for the Environmental Advisory Committee, John Bogosian.
Right here, any others? Hearing none, moving on.
That's it.
Okay.
Thank you.
Consideration of approval of an agreement with a lobbyist firm to represent the city in Columbia. This was approved by council on August 24th, 2021, of $50,000. Do I hear a motion?
Motion to approve.
Second.
Any discussion?
Yes.
Yes, sir.
I'd like to ask the city administrator, who is this firm for the benefit of the public? And do they have any other connections on the island?
So I have provided to all of council two proposals from the two firms that we interviewed and met with and think that would do a great job. One is Adams and Reese and another is Tompkins, Thompson, and Brown. I think what you're referring to is Tompkins, Thompson, and Brown used to represent the, a local organization of residents that got together to oppose S40 and some other issues that were affecting the city this year. They will no longer be representing that group after the end of the year. So there would be no conflict between both of us, the city and that group being the same, clients of the same firm. One of the proposals, I think that both of them are fully qualified to represent the city in this new endeavor. The agreements would be for 12 months. So the city would be working with this firm for whatever firm's elected for 12 months. As the mayor mentioned earlier, the city allocated $50,000 in August when you all were distributing the positive net result. As you can see in the proposals, one is well within the budgeted $50,000 amount. Another one is over about $10,000. So that just, I wanted to highlight that for, for you all to, to make a decision.
Yes, I'd like to make an amendment to my motion. That would be to recommend retaining the services of, what was the name of this second firm?
Tompkins, Thompson, and Brown.
Thank you very much.
Second.
Yeah.
Any discussion on the amendment?
I think, could it be the friendly amendment?
Want to be friendly about it? That's a friendly amendment.
Okay.
Correct.
Yes, ma'am.
Mayor, real quick, can I just... Just real, real quick, because I've been involved with Desiree over the last month or so looking at these firms. And, you know, to me, the comfort level with this particular firm that Jimmy's recommended us hire is, you know, this is their sole focus of business. And the other one, again, very qualified, but it was lobbyist line of business underneath a big law firm. I feel better about the focus we're going to have on this and the, these guys are fully up to speed on IOP issues. And I think we'll be able to hit the ground running on 1-1 and hopefully we'll get a contract executed before the end of the year. So I just appreciate the support on this one. I think it's the right choice for, you know, I think we try it for a year and see what happens.
Anyone else?
Real quick. Well, I agree with Philip, and they have, Desiree told me, they have four full-time lobbyists. The other firm just has one. So...
That's right.
To me, it's the obvious choice.
Well, as a lame duck mayor, I think it's a very smart thing for us to be doing after what happened these last two years. We need to have somebody who's on top of it and let us know. So again, I think I'm ready for a road call.
Ask Councilmember Smith first, so she's aware of that. Councilmember Smith, I'm going to ask for your vote first on this issue for the lobbyists. Thumbs up, got it. Councilmember Ward?
Aye.
Councilmember Ramoy.
Aye.
Councilmember Bell.
Aye.
Councilmember Popson.
Aye.
Councilmember Pounds.
Aye.
Councilmember Streetman.
Aye.
Mayor Carroll.
Aye.
All in favor?
Thank you very much. You know, after hearing Desiree say we had a hundred and thirty-eight meetings this past year. For those coming in, and then you're gonna hear a lot of talking about executive sessions, but you know why we got to do it. We've got several attorneys on council coming in. So anyway, we have to have a motion to go on executive sessions in accordance with South Carolina Code thirty dash four seventy-eight-two to receive legal advice related to the settlement of legal claims against tidal wave watersports. Do I hear a motion?
So move.
Second.
Councilor Popson.
Aye.
Councilmember Pounds.
Aye.
Councilmember Streetman.
Aye.
Councilmember Smith. Thumbs up. Councilmember Roy.
Aye.
Councilmember Reward.
Aye.
Councilmember Bell.
Aye.
Councilmember, C.C. Mayor Carroll.
Aye.